Good evening. I call this Rockingham County Public School Board meeting to order. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. Members, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. McQuicken. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome tonight, everyone. It's a chilly night all of a sudden for us, so I'm glad you guys could all make it out. Can you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and be seated. Thank you. We will now move into our recognition and presentations portion of the meeting, and I believe we'll have Mr. Dan Sanders start us out with that.
Madam Chair Lohr, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett, we'd like to welcome you to Broadway High School for tonight's meeting. I would like to also extend a warm welcome to any community member who's in attendance this afternoon. Before I turn the microphone over to our assistant principals for the award presentations, I'd like to recognize individuals who helped set up the school for tonight's event. Our Broadway High School custodians, along with individuals from the central office tech department, dedicated time in setting up for this meeting. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Gilkerson for answering lots of emails from me and helping organize this event. So, right now, I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Madison for our first Character Counts Award.
The faculty and staff of Broadway High School is proud to name Herschel Hoffeditz as one of our Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award winners. Herschel, will you and your family come on up?
(applause).
Yes. So Herschel is one of our many outstanding seniors this year. Herschel can be found socializing with his friends during both our transitions and lunch, but is more often than not found working in one of his classrooms on academics due to his willingness to go above and beyond to learn. When he is not working on his classwork, he is putting effort in honing his athletic skills on the football field or with the track team. He devotes time to FFA events, sources of strength, and working with the local Ruritans Club, of which he's a member. When you ask anyone to describe Herschel, the list of attributes is long and very positive. Herschel cares not only about putting in the time to create high-quality work, but is also one of the first students in his class to step up as a leader and help others when there's a concept or activity that he's mastered. He's like a peer mentor. Many teachers have said that his work ethic, the standards that he sets for himself, his maturity level, and his unique perspective makes him a driven and born leader amongst his peers. While several teachers spoke about his quiet nature, they also mentioned his quick and very sharp sense of humor. Herschel is the type of student that every teacher hopes they get several of every year. And that is why Broadway has chosen to honor Herschel with the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award.
Herschel, you know me better than that. Herschel and I actually go pretty far back, actually, since you guys moved to this area when you were sixth grade, somewhere. Third grade? Oh my goodness. I know you've grown a lot since then. And I was also told to keep this short, so I'm glad that you're the first one, so I'm just gonna do all my spiel on you, and then we'll try to move a little faster as we go along. But I'm just so proud of all of our students, and it's fitting tonight that Herschel is our Character Counts Award winner because Herschel and I kind of met through 4H. He was one of my 4Hers, and the Kelly Coggsdale part of this was my extension agent when I was almost Herschel's age. Just, I think the year after she came. But Kelly Coggsdale is very special to me, and Brittany Lamb was very special to Dan Breedon, our former school board member. So, part of this award is a pin to wear close to your heart, so there's, we, I offer you that, to wear by your heart. And then, oh, you have people with you tonight. I know your people. Can you, can you tell us who your people are? And have them stand up? Your parents and your sister. Is Karina Sade here?
No.
Have your parents stand up.
My parents, Herb Hoffeditz and Pamela Hoffeditz, are back there.
Thank you. And as we know, we as a board completely understand that the character begins at home. So, thank you guys for raising such an outstanding young man and for teaching him to be a pillar of our community. And because of that, we have a certificate for you all to hang on your wall proudly. So, we'll be giving each member a certificate, so you can take that back to your parents. And, I think I forgot the best part of all. Okay, these are the parent volunteers. It's the other. It's a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. So, we gotta make sure we get you the right one. Yep, this one. So, congratulations. And I want you to go along and shake everyone's hand, and let's give Herschel another round of applause.
Ms. Smith will be presenting our next award.
Asia, can you join me up here? The faculty and staff of Broadway High School is proud to name Asia Deng as our second Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award winner. As a senior at Broadway, everyone knows Asia. As you walk through the halls, you can guarantee that Asia will acknowledge you with her friendly personality and her contagious smile. Asia's charisma allows her to be outgoing, and her selflessness is of a level even teachers stated they wish they had themselves. Collaborative, hard worker, compassionate, and determined were traits that are repeated over and over when staff members overwhelmingly nominated Asia. A common theme that seems to repeat itself since her ninth-grade year is that she's one of the hardest workers in her class. Teachers stated that they wish every student would put in the time and effort outside of the class on their academic studies, as Asia does. Stories of Asia being willing to go into classes outside of normal class time for help or to help others were repeated from several teachers. Asia always seems to have a positive attitude wherever you see her, be it in the hallway, the classroom, or on the cheer team. Asia is the type of student who will motivate others to be successful because her values and determination show themselves to others and act as constant motivators. Asia stays true to her beliefs and values and never has a bad thing to say about others. Her giving nature, her work in the community, such as helping with Vacation Bible School over the summer, is the reason why Broadway has chosen to honor Asia with the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award.
Asia, do you have people here with you tonight?
I do.
Can you, do you want to introduce them?
I have my mother and father, Viet, Deng, and Kristen Brooks.
Thank you, guys, for raising Asia to be a role model in our community. And we have these items for you, and if you could shake hands with all the school board members as well. And let's give Asia another round of applause.
Presenting our next recognition is Assistant Principal Jennifer Nick.
All right, Ms. Bandell, can you join me at the front, please? As a parent, especially of a high school student, it's sometimes hard to find a way to volunteer or help. Oftentimes, high school students want their parents to be around only when the high schooler finds it convenient, and the school is often not a place where many high schoolers want their parents to show up and help out. However, our volunteer that we want to recognize tonight is a band parent, and one thing to know is that band parents carry that title with pride. Band parents often carry the weight of many different things, not mentioning helping to load or unload heavy instruments in and out of a trailer for competitions, but by making sure that the band program is noticed, supported, and appreciated. Stacy Bandell has been working with the band boosters for six years now and is our current treasurer. She's been an integral part to our booster's successes over the years and continues to serve our students. We've had countless fundraisers and events where she is one of our most reliable members that's always willing to step up and help out. Sometimes those fundraising events are run by only her and one other parent. The Broadway High School band travels to many events over the course of the year, and it often requires feeding our band students. She has been present for just about every band meal and has often provided meal items at the last minute where there's a need. She's always made the time to help us, and we know what an incredible sacrifice it is for any person. Stacy has and always will be a part of the Broadway High School band family, and this is why Broadway High School wants to recognize Stacy as our volunteer award winner.
Thank you so much for your dedication to our school. And can you believe, I'm looking at that picture, our little guys are now big guys. I think we've been to several events together, and congratulations on, I think the band actually did really well this past weekend at Parade of Champions, and then they went over and did Charlottesville, too. So, did you do the trip over the mountain?
I did both.
Oh, bless your heart. Thank you.
I placed third in Charlottesville.
Oh, they placed third in Charlottesville. That's wonderful. And do you have people with you tonight?
I do. My husband's with me, Yarn.
My husband, Yarn.
Thank you. Thank you, because I understand that a lot of times when we're volunteering, our family is left without food at home because we're fixing food for other people. So, thank you, Yarn, for letting her participate here at school. We also have a certificate and a Klein's Dairy Bar Award for you as well, but thank you so much. Let's have another round of applause.
We will now move on to our Inspire Awards.
New this year. Our next speaker, I left my glasses, Lacy Spring Elementary School. We're gonna have some more Character Counts Awards.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Vianni Perez. Vianni is a hard-working student that puts forth 100% effort in not only her academics but her community and peer relationships. She has outstanding character and displays a positive attitude each and every day. Her love for learning is infectious, and her heart of gold makes her a friend to everyone. This young lady has a strong desire to help others. You will always find Vianni doing the right thing and setting a wonderful example for her classmates. She displays citizenship in her school community. Vianni has earned the respect of those she meets.
Vianni, did you bring people with you tonight?
My mom.
Do you want to speak in the microphone, or do you want me to do it? I can do it. I can do it. Your mom? Can your mom stand up? And does mom have a name? Jen?
Vianna.
Vianna? That's beautiful. And do you have any other people? Just your mom? Well, thank you so much, Mom, for coming tonight, and thank you for supporting Vianni and helping her be such a great role model for our schools. And we have treats for you as well, so thank you. And let's give Vianni another round of applause.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Ms. Lillian's making her way down. I will start reading about her. She is a kind, caring, and compassionate student who is always willing to lend a hand to anyone who needs help. She listens to others and genuinely cares about her peers. Her gentle and yet vivacious personality is naturally inviting and brings such joy and lightheartedness wherever she is. Lillian is not only an exceptional person but also a very committed student. She can always be found on task and doing her best work. Her character embodies trustworthiness and citizenship that is evident in the relationship she has with her peers. Lillian is an exceptional example of a student with outstanding character.
My stepmom, Amanda Gaynor, and my dad, Kevin Gaynor.
Okay, so, Lillian's stepmom and her dad are here with us tonight?
Amanda.
Amanda Gaynor and Kevin Gaynor. Can you guys please stand? There you are! Again, thank you to you all, and thank you, Lillian, for being such a great role model in our schools. Let's hear it for Lillian again.
Our Volunteer of the Year is Patty Phillips, our PTO president. If you will come on down, please. Patty Phillips, our PTO president, goes far beyond what is expected as a PTO president. Like an Energizer Bunny, she hops from one task to another to make sure that plans are made and implemented for students and families to enjoy. Our fundraisers to purchase necessary items and supplies for our school are far-reaching and impactful as our needs are always met. We have several yearly events as a result of the leadership of Mrs. Phillips. Our Lacy Christmas Cruisin', beginning and end-of-the-year school picnics, trunk-or-treat and staff appreciation meals during parent-teacher conferences, and at the end of the school year. She has spearheaded fundraisers such as Chick-fil-A, Dairy Queen, and Pax Ice Cream Nights, along with Rodda Cutlery and Krispy Kreme Donut fundraisers, and Laps for Lacy. Her dynamic disposition and eagerness to truly make a difference in the lives of students, staff, and the community is easily observed and greatly appreciated. Mrs. Patty Phillips.
Patty, did you bring people with you?
I did not.
I can be your people.
Hey, I've got lots of school family here, though.
And thank you to you all who support her, and, full disclosure, she gets me to help with the Christmas Cruisin', and that's so much fun. This woman is an amazing volunteer. And yeah, call me about this trunk-or-treat thing. That sounds like fun.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's give Patty another round of applause. Then next, we will hear from Linville Edom Elementary School, Principal Karen Ritter.
Good evening. I'm gonna start first talking about Ruben Gingrich. Ruben Gingrich is kind and friendly to all his classmates. He is quick to laugh with them but never at them. As a team player, he extends invitations to anyone interested in joining a game, regardless of skill or ability. He is eager to help wherever it is needed, whether assisting a fellow student or a teacher, and he often volunteers for special projects. He is a hard worker and a dedicated learner. He takes his time and puts forth the effort required to produce quality work. He even keeps his classmates on task, which is sometimes not an easy job. We are extremely proud to recognize Ruben as a role model for all Linville Edom students.
Okay, can Ruben's people please stand up? It's apparently quite a crew of you all. So, we have his grandparents, his parents, and his little siblings? They're all littler? Yeah. And thank you, guys, for supporting Ruben, and thank you, Ruben, for being such an outstanding role model to our schools. It looks like you have a lot of people to share your ice cream with, so, good luck with that. But thank you so much. Let's give Ruben another round of applause.
Braylon Lee is a shining example of what it means to be respectful. She is warm and accepting of anyone who seeks her attention, providing emotional support for her fellow students. Her positivity and optimistic attitude brighten our room each and every day. She looks forward to our daily lessons and is eager to participate, demonstrating perseverance even when encountering challenges. She is also a good role model and looks out for our younger students, taking care to see that they know where to go and making sure they get to the buses on time. She seeks out every opportunity to help those in need. Braylon also has an excellent work ethic, taking time and care with each assignment. We are thrilled to recognize Braylon's effort with this award.
Okay, so Braylon just said she brought, like, her entire family here, so if you guys can all stand up, we'd like to recognize you. But thank you, guys, for supporting Braylon, and thank you. It looks like we've got some more nice little character role models coming up from behind Braylon, so thank you so much for Braylon, not only for being a role model in our schools but also for your little siblings. Thank you. Let's give Braylon another round of applause.
And our Volunteer of the Year award, I'd like to invite Sue Haley. And I must say, I had the privilege of being Ms. Haley's principal when I was at John Whalen, and continuing that privilege to have her grandchildren at Linville, and so she comes in and serves in a different capacity, but it's always great to have Sue with us. So, a few words about Sue. As a former RCPs second-grade teacher, Sue Haley knows the importance of volunteers in our schools. We are so grateful to have Ms. Haley volunteer in her grandchildren's classrooms at Linville each week. Ms. Haley helps with small reading groups and reads with students, often asking them questions during reading to check their comprehension. She also assists in some data collection to inform the teacher about students' progress with their phonics knowledge. In addition, she assists students during math by running math stations in order to help increase their math skills. Ms. Haley can also be counted on to assist with the book fairs held in the library each year. Mrs. Haley is a shining example of the importance of having positive adults interacting with our students. She is a valuable volunteer.
Thank you so much for your service to our schools. You are quite a resource, and I'm sure we're just thrilled to have you. So, thank you. Did you bring people tonight?
My husband and my daughter. My grandchildren are too tired to...
Somebody's been making them read a lot at school. Thank you all for sharing her with us. Let's give her another round of applause. And our final Character Counts school tonight will be Plains Elementary.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. At Plains Elementary School, character development and student leadership is a top priority. We begin each day celebrating our students and actions that help shape our positive school culture. So, to start this evening, I'd like to take a moment to introduce Theo Ennis, son of Trip and Karen Ennis. Theo Ennis displays good character each day in both his words and his actions. He shows kindness to each classmate, which is a wonderful example to others. Theo treats others the way he wants to be treated. In class, Theo is always striving to do his best, and his effort level is always top-notch. He listens attentively and follows along well. Theo is respectful, he's responsible to both adults and his peers alike, and for these reasons, Theo is an excellent choice for the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award.
Theo, who did you bring with you tonight?
My mom, my dad, my sister, and two of my grandparents.
Wonderful. Can you guys please stand up? Thank you all so much for being such a great role model and teaching Theo to be just a great, be kind and nice to his fellow classmates. And let's give Theo another round of applause.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Very good.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Ava Mill to please join me at the podium. Ava is the daughter of Alexi Cooper and Victor Mill. Ava shows tremendous character each day in her words and her actions. She puts forth her best effort in all things. She is an incredible listener, and she focuses even through the distractions around her. When interacting with her peers, she is gentle, patient, kind, and encouraging. She is trustworthy and dependable to adults and her peers. Without a doubt, she is a positive influence on all of her classmates. For these reasons, Ava is an excellent choice for the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award.
Ava, right? I wanted to call it, say Eva. Ava, Ava's stepdad, can you please stand? He brought her tonight, so thank you. Thank you so much for all the effort and training. I want to say training, that's not really the right word. The role model that you all have been so that Ava can be a great role model to her students, and thank you so much. Plains is extremely special to me because that's where my children went, and I know that the students at all of our schools are special, but Plains students are really, really special. So, thank you for being a role model to all of our students. Congratulations. Let's have another round of applause for you.
Is Caitlin Burkey here this evening? Okay. In addition to being a super-busy mom and a great... In addition to being a super busy mom and a great volunteer at Plains, Kaitlin Burkey is also a phenomenal daughter, and she's celebrating her mother's birthday with her this evening, and so she couldn't be here with us. However, we do feel at Plains that when it comes to parent volunteers, we feel we have an embarrassment of riches. And in recognizing those people, however, we do have one volunteer who has done so much to coordinate the efforts of other outstanding parent volunteers, and that is Kaitlin Burkey. Kaitlin is a positive, energetic, and fun PES mom who has gone the extra mile in serving the students and the staff at Plains Elementary School. As one of our teachers has said, Kaitlin is a true gift to the Plains community, and she's one of the coolest moms in Rockingham County. She has put so much time and effort into expanding our school's PTO, welcoming all Plains families as members. Thanks to Kaitlin's leadership, our current PTO has had boots on the ground in exploring new fundraising partnerships and raising more than $20,000 towards our school's swingset initiative in their very first year together, more than the previous five years combined. They have raised funds which have been used to support amazing opportunities for our students and to help boost the morale and show appreciation for our hard-working Plains staff. However, as those closest to her would be quick to tell you, Kaitlin is also extremely humble, and she would be quick to acknowledge the contributions of everyone who works alongside her. Kaitlin Burkey's infectious smile and radiant personality motivates and inspires others to make things happen. In spite of her busy personal schedule in raising five phenomenal children, Kaitlin has made Plains Elementary School a personal priority. This evening, it is my pleasure to recognize Kaitlin Burkey, Plains Elementary School's Volunteer of the Year.
And in full disclosure, I think I gave somebody the wrong Kleins Dairy Bar. They're all the same? Okay, so I'll go ahead and give this to you to give to Ashley. Thank you. And that concludes our Character Counts and Volunteer Awards for the night. We're going to move on to our Inspire Awards, and our first Inspire Award is presented by Ashley Burgoyne, presenting to Heather Kirkland from Linville Edom.
Okay, hopefully I hold this far enough away. My name's Ashley Burgoyne, and tonight I'm here with Adrian Burgoyne, my daughter, who is a very proud second grader at Linville Edom Elementary School, and I had something prepared to say, but on the way here, she told me she wanted to speak. So I will read my nomination, but I'll let Adrian talk first.
Well, I nominate somebody. Mom, can you please hold my crown close to my mouth still, so that I can hear myself?
Drum roll?
Mrs. Kirkland, who I nominated.
Did you want to say anything about Mrs. Kirkland?
Well, I did want to say a few things. Thank you for giving me back the microphone. But I would like to say, well, Ms. Kirkland is a gladiant person. She goes, dude hugs, she's always...
Good hug.
And she's always there. And she's always... That was too close. Oopsie.
She's always there to help everybody.
Let me talk. Well, and also she helps people with their emotions. She does the girl lunch.
Girl lunch?
That's hilarious. Well, I would nominate, I nominated, that's the person I nominated. And that was a prize, surprise, Mrs. Kirkland.
Okay, Adrian and I got together and wrote this, that I was nominating Mrs. Kirkland because she is the definition of going above and beyond the call of duty. I have had the best experience with the staff at Linville Edom Elementary School, and I wish I could nominate all of them. Mrs. Kirkland has helped ease Adrian's transition to second grade. When she was in first grade, she facilitated a sit-along so she could see what her future classroom is going to be like. After summer, she was incredibly nervous about returning to school, and Mrs. Kirkland allowed Adrian to come to school prior to back-to-school night to kind of do a miniature walk through her new school day. Mrs. Kirkland has called, emailed, and communicated with me every step of the way. She is an amazing person, and I cannot be more grateful for her. There are a few teachers from my time in school that made a lasting impact on me, and I know that Mrs. Kirkland is going to be one of those people for Adrian. Adrian did want to add when we wrote the Inspire Award that she's kind to people, a really good hugger, and she helps people with their emotions, and Mrs. Kirkland should win. Right? And here's all your stuff you have for her. And she brought her own gift.
Congratulations, Ms. Kirkland, and thank you guys for presenting. That was adorable. Next, we have Darlene Perez, presenting to Dani Grog from Broadway High School.
Hello, I'm Darlene Perez. This is my son Jaden Perez and my nephew Christopher Alveranga. For the past two years, my son, excuse me, has participated in playing football at Broadway High School. Excuse me. I've attended numerous meetings, and he has made everyone in a room feel like we are a family. He pours his heart out for all the players on and off the field. He has a huge heart. He is an amazing role model for these children, and I honestly believe he deserves this so much. I've never encountered a teacher, coach, father, friend to be as amazing as him. I'm glad my son, Jaden, and my nephew, Christopher, both have the opportunity to not only play for him, but also learn from him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Perez, and congratulations, Mr. Grog. Our final presenter will be Jerry Marston, presenting to Dana Stover from Lacey Spring. And as they make their way forward, I, we do this all the time, so I sometimes forget to tell you guys what's going on. The Inspire Awards are nominations of Rockingham County Public Schools employees by the public. So anyone can make a nomination, but typically during this segment of the school board meeting, you're going to want to have your tissues handy because you get to hear some really amazing stories like Ms. Perez just shared with us. So thank you all for sharing that, and thank you to everyone who nominates. And I will turn the floor over to you now.
Thank you. I nominated the head custodian at Lacey Springs Elementary School. She's very inspirational to all students. I've had two children complete Lacey, and I still have a first grader there that attends. My children have spoken of how great she keeps the school clean, allowing them to help her in the past. For example, I know that at one point, my child was having a bad day. Ms. Dana took her and spent a little time with her, calmed her down, and explained how things get better, just to take a deep breath. Not only has she helped teach children about keeping their home, their second home clean, but teaches them life lessons as well. These children are like sponges. They absorb everything. It only takes that one person to stay humble and ask them, how are they today? How are you doing? To brighten their day. That is Ms. Dana. I am a firm believer that Ms. Dana generally cares for every student, especially my two children, one high school senior and the other in seventh grade, still about, still talk about, remember when Ms. Dana said this and she did that? I am truly blessed as a mother to know that there are staff members willing to go out of their way and make sure that schools are always clean from the top to bottom, and knowing that they go out of their way and make the children feel loved. Thank you.
And Ms. Stover, thank you so much for all you do for our schools. That concludes our Inspire Awards and our awards and recognitions for the night. We will now move into public comments. I will remind, actually, let's take just a moment to let some, well, you guys move out quietly, and I'll just quickly go over the rules for public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes. At 30 seconds, a timer will, a chime will sound, and at the end of three minutes, the microphone will be cut off, and I may gavel you. Please, we've just spent all this time talking about Character Counts, please make sure that your comments reflect the Character Counts, and also please address the board as a whole, not to individual board members. Also, please, let's not have any emotional outbursts from the audience. Our first speaker tonight is Nancy Basset.
You knew you were first.
That's true. I didn't know I was first. I got here early. So Chair Lore, school board members, Dr. Shiflett, of course, I'm Nancy Basset, president of the Rockingham County Education Association, and tonight I'd like to address Dr. Shiflett. As much as we educators know that the PLC, professional learning, is so important for all of our educators, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for today, where you rearranged everything, gave our educators time to step back and breathe and have a teacher workday. I've had many, many comments today saying how wonderful it was that you support us so exceptionally well, and I've heard nothing but good comments about how you're handling everything that we're going through. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for everything.
Our next speaker will be Sarah Horst.
My name is Sarah Horst, and I'm addressing you tonight as a very upset mother. What you all did two weeks ago on September 25th, 2023, concerning Governor Youngkin's model policies was beyond disappointing. It was negligent, and you have now opened yourself up to lawsuits. You refused to pass the essence of the document. The parts that you refused to adopt are D, G, and H, and you did that despite your attorney and our Virginia Attorney General Miara saying that it was safe and legal to do so. Tonight, I'm going to focus on Model Policy G, which addresses student participation in sex-specific school activities and events and use of school facilities. This policy, had you passed it, would have protected all of our children and would require our students to use the restroom and locker rooms that correspond with their biological sex, except to the extent that federal law allows for transgender students. However, if a transgender student is using a facility not determined by their biological sex, the policy requires, or would require, that parents and students be given the right to opt out of using those shared facilities and be given an alternative option. Because of your duplicity, two days after your vote, Rockingham County had an incident involving locker rooms at an athletic event that resulted in a transgender student from another division using the girls' locker rooms while our girls were in the locker room changing. How is this acceptable? Our girls were rightfully upset about their lack of privacy and respect. They were not notified that this would be happening, and they were not given an alternative location to change in. From a very young age, we teach our children about their bodies and their right to dignity and privacy. Many of us, women and our daughters, prefer a female doctor. We teach our sons and daughters not to change clothes in the same room. This is logical. What is not logical is taking away that protection and respect from our children when they are in your school. This very incident turned parent fears into reality. What are we waiting for? What three members of this board did at the 25th of September meeting was a political maneuver to help one of your colleagues with her campaign. You attempted to create a way to save her from having to vote no on Youngkin's model policies because only a Democrat would do that, and a Democrat is not going to win in Rockingham County this year. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Michael Stimple.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, Chair Lore, and board members. I am here today to talk about the importance of character. We had a bunch of students who showed exemplary character, and character does indeed count. And I believe, as our CPS does, that character counts. The six pillars of character within the Character Counts program are trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. These are all important character traits that we should all seek to model. Unfortunately, we have a board member who has consistently shown a lack of character when publicly interacting with board members and the superintendent. The board member has a history of talking out of turn, interrupting others, and continuing to speak when they were asked to stop. They have publicly called the previous superintendent a liar. Last meeting, they interrupted the chair at least six times. At least three of those times were after they had been asked to stop. I mean, if any child did that in a classroom, they'd be taken to the principal's office. Character counts. If only, if character truly counts in our CPS, our public officials should also reflect the six pillars of character. Part of the root of this problem is this board member cares more about partisan politics than taking proper care of students in Rockingham County, and it shows. They cite the popularity of the governor as reasons to support a particular policy instead of thinking what is best for our students. They make statements during board meetings about supporting, about school board candidates they like. Our CPS deserves public officials who are dedicated to our students and not a partisan political agenda, like the speaker before me. You know, it was made clear that that is exactly what the current board member and that person will, that kind of agenda. Character counts.
Our next speaker will be Scott McLean.
My name is Scott McClellan, and I live in District 3. I would like to call attention to a parental right that we, as public school community, all share, and that's the parental right to a competent and ethical school board. We parents deserve a school board who prioritizes education through supporting the needs of students and teachers over a school board who chases after invisible boogeymen like CRT and Marxist indoctrination. Since the 2021 election, our school board has devolved from working together to address practical and tough issues to a surprising level of infighting, with much of that contention coming from my district. I've noticed that when there presents a standstill, or when more time is needed to fully understand an issue, District 3 threatens the rest of the board with the election cycle we are now in. If only District 3 had more power than District 3, I'm sorry, if only District 3 had more power, then District 3 could get what it wants, which is what? For the last two years, we've seen District 3 prioritize religious prejudices and the thirst for political power over everything else that matters to our children and us as their parents. As a school board member, is it righteous to use one's position as a means to further empower oneself at the expense of others' children, especially LGBT children, or is it righteous to serve the school community with kindness and understanding? For voters this November, is it best to elect three more candidates whose faith has also succumbed to political idolatry? Is it best to allow candidates who come from the same kind of messed-up families as the rest of us to assert their compromised religious morals onto our school system by limiting our children's access to knowledge and their need for self-expression? As we inch closer to the November election, we are now seeing candidates in District 5, silenced dissenters, and anyone who questions their policies. For example, a well-endorsed candidate posted something racially contentious on their social media page and then deleted and blocked a black person who respectfully took issue with their assertions. Issues have also been raised about the same candidate's trustworthiness relating to potentially suspicious work ethics, but those voices have been deleted and blocked by both the District 5 candidate and the District 3's board member. The three candidates endorsed by my school board member promised to improve our school system, but if parents want to know the real threat that Christian nationalism poses to our children's education, our public school system, how our tax dollars are spent, please take a look at what's happening and... our tax dollars are spent, please take a look at what's happening in rural Oklahoma schools whose state superintendent is, whose state superintendent is neck deep in lawsuits. Thank you much.
Our next speaker will be Drake Garrison.
So I was asked by some of you guys to come back here and offer alternative punishments than the ones you have now for the substance abuse policy. So my name is Drake Garrison. I am the senior class president at Broadway High School and I'm here to talk about alternative punishments for the policy on substances in school. Instead of the 10-day suspension and 90 days of poor school standing for the first offense, I recommend keeping the instruction time on substance abuse course. I recommend that you have a 10 days of detention so that they are not out of school and given more free time than they already have. Next, I recommend instead of putting them in poor school standing, that they are required to complete at least 20 hours of community service in two months. If not completed, then put them into poor school standing. The first offense should not, should avoid the use of poor school standing so kids' opportunities to stay busy with things like sports and clubs are not taken away. Sports and clubs being taken away can damage a kid's mental health. Along with this, it can destroy a kid's chance to go to college or earn scholarships. For any subsequent offenses, I recommend keeping the same punishments that you already have. And I appreciate you guys listening to me and thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Drake. And Drake, can you email that to us as well? Because I was trying to keep up, but I did not. Oh, you did a great job. Thank you. And Randy Simpson is our last speaker.
Thank you for your time. I'm here this evening to speak as a parent and as a taxpayer. We're nearing the end of a school board election cycle marked with hostility and discord, allegations of Marxist conspiracies, blaming librarians for child abuse, demanding book bans, candidates claiming to control the weather with campaign signs, and downright uncivil behavior we would not tolerate from our kids. Reasonable people who have been paying attention to this political theater around the school board election are wondering how we got here. When did the train jump the tracks from making sure our kids are getting an education to veiled threats and disinformation? Like many school board districts across the country, Rockingham County is being manipulated by outside special interests. A religious fascist group called the City Elders is backing several candidates, with one candidate in particular proud to endorse their profoundly anti-democratic messages. In between promises to take our schools back to basics, we're also told things like freedom from religion is not guaranteed, Rockingham County is enemy territory, and separation of church and state is an idea created by Satan. These are direct quotes, by the way, available on social media. This is a sample of what groups like this and their carefully chosen candidates intend for our country, one school board district at a time. Division of government and society along lines that favor those who share their beliefs while disenfranchising the rest of us of our constitutional rights. This is the face of so-called dominion theology or the belief that government ought to operate as an arm of the church. And make no mistake, they don't mean your church. They don't mean you. According to the elders, anyone who believes that religion and government ought to be separate is an agent of Satan. You can look at their website for confirmation of everything that I'm saying. They don't hide it. As a voting representative of the county's quote-unquote "enemy" population, I'd like to point out the irony of launching a campaign based on dominion theology in Virginia of all places. In 1786, Thomas Jefferson wrote the Virginia Statutes, Statutes for Religious Freedom, which became a template for the First Amendment. I'm going to read a couple quick selections. Item one, God hath created the mind free. All attempts to influence it by punishment or burdens or by civil incapacitations tend to only beget hypocrisy and meanness and are a departure from the plan of the holy author of our religion, who chose not to propagate by coercion. Item two, no man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship place or ministry whatsoever, or shall be enforced, restrained, molested, or burdened to do so. Mr. Jefferson's words remind us that Virginia and the U.S. have the freedom to choose how they practice their religion. No one, whether they're a school board member, an attorney general, a state representative, or even the governor gets to plan and decide that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments for the evening. We will now move on to board member comments, and we're going to start with Mr. Cross.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share tonight. Thank you for everybody that showed up tonight and all of our presenters and even those who came and spoke for public comments. Thank you so much for being part of the process. I first want to say thank you, Principal Dan Sanders, for preparing everything here at the school today. I really appreciate you doing a great job in your first year as head principal here. And so thank you for everything that you're doing. Also, Jennifer Madison, Assistant Principal here at Broadway High School, and Jennifer Nick, and Paige Smith. Thank you guys so much for everything that you do here at Broadway High School and making this a great place for our children to attend school. Also want to thank Deputy Robinson, the SRO here at Broadway High School. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for everything that you do. Get to see a lot of cool things happen in the community with you and always hear good positive things about you as SRO here at the, at the high school. So thank you. And that's all I have tonight.
Again, like Mr. Cross said, thanks to everybody coming out, the presenters for the Inspire Awards, Kelly Cogdill Awards, and public comments. Tonight, I'd like to highlight some unique educational opportunities that our kids get outside of the classroom. There's a partnership with Chesapeake Bay Foundation and our science department where they're able to take float trips on the South Fork of the Shenandoah. We, my farm's been working with Chesapeake Bay Foundation for 20 years as part of this program. So last week, we had two groups from Turner Ashby High School, and then this week, we've got a couple others coming. And it's, it's always fun to see eight, you know, eight to 20 kids out on the river getting ready to check out river ecology, soil health, river health. And they're able to do it outside of the classroom, in their, in their community, in their county. And then also the, the mixture of some of those classes. It's an ag course mixed with a bio course. So it's combining two different subjects to learn about something the same. So I think that's super cool and I wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McQuilkin.
Thank you, Chair Lohr. I'd like to begin my highlights this evening with a student art show that happened the day after our last school board meeting. And it's at the county office building, our, our school county office building. And this, there are many, many wonderful paintings and artwork on the walls. And I encourage everybody here to come and look at them. They'll be up for an entire school year. And please walk around our, our halls and take a look at all the wonderful work our students are doing. My second one is the unified basketball has begun for the 2023 school year, 2023-24. It started last, what, Tuesday or Wednesday at Spotswood High School with TA playing Spotswood. And if anybody, I welcome everybody to come to the very next unified basketball game in the evening, and that's going to be at Turner Ashby, two days from now on Wednesday, October the 11th. I think you'll enjoy it. And my last highlight has to do with the bands. The school, the school bands that we all see at the football games are also performing in competitions. I know that TA went to the Hermitage Classic in Richmond for an area competition on Saturday, September 30th, and did extraordinarily well. They brought home five trophies. And I think Ms. Lohr, Chair Lohr, is going to talk about the band competition that just took place on Saturday at JMU. But that's for you, Ms. Lohr.
Thank you. What a nice segue. Yes, I was able to attend the portions of the Parade of Champions, which is basically an entire day long. I mean, I think it started at like eight o'clock in the morning and went until 10, I think final awards were at 10:30 at night. And bands just performed every, was it 15 minutes? All that time. Except in the middle of the day, they took a break and the marching, marching Fighting Dukes, is that?
Marching Royal Dukes.
Marching Royal Dukes, the Marching Royal Dukes performed. And man, that's worth the price of admission. 510 band members, all playing their instruments right at you. It's, it's like you feel it in your bones and it is an awesome experience. And just to see, being an outsider, seeing the same kind of camaraderie on the field that we see from our football teams or our sporting events, or I even see it in the ag community with FFA events. Just kids excelling at what they are passionate about is awesome. I always love to see things that, that kids are passionate about and the reason that kids come to school. And Parade of Champions showcased it magnificently for our band students, and it was a wonderful event. And then I know that Broadway, as soon as they finished competing, jumped on the bus and ran over to Charlottesville to do another competition. And Bro, Turner Ashby decided to maybe not make that trip over because they had homecoming that night. So TA had homecoming game, Parade of Champions, and then the homecoming dance. And then some of them even came back to listen to awards. So it was just quite, quite a weekend for our students and I really enjoyed just being able to witness all of that. And that and then Inspire Awards and Character Account Awards, life doesn't get much better than that. So it's, it's been a great week. So thank you all for supporting Rockingham County Public Schools. And I'm going to send it over to Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Basset, thank you for your kind words. I'm sure you haven't talked to the right people yet. So you just keep talking to some folks. You'll encounter some different opinions, I'm sure. And Drake, thank you for your comments tonight. So often we get people who maybe have complaints or concerns and they don't bring us a solution. But Drake, offered a possible solution. I'm not saying we're going to adopt it or that's what we're going to do, but he says, hey, here's something we don't really like. Could you consider this? And that's, thank you for that. I appreciate that. A few other things I'd like to highlight. In September, the 1st of September, I made a challenge to all of our students to come to school every day in September. And we finally got sort of a tabulation on that. And about 30% of our students pre-K-12 attended every day in September. So this week, I'm going to be working with Kaitlyn to make some videos that we'll send out to the schools. And all of those students at each school who had perfect attendance, we're going to put their name in a raffle and we're going to take lunch to them the week after next as a way to say thank you for showing up every day in September. So we're looking forward to that. Also, I want to highlight, two Saturdays ago, my wife Katie and I attended the Dinner Theater at Spotswood High School. And they did the murderous mansion of Mr. Uno. And the students were absolutely terrific. It was, I was just very entertained for a couple of hours. And I'm always amazed at what our students can do, right? I mean, just unbelievable. And then last week, I had an opportunity. I was invited to go to Linville Edom and they were having a flag ceremony and the American Legion post came out and was showing the students how to, with dignity and honor, destroy American flag, right? They had some old flags they were going to burn and retire. Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Couldn't find the word. And so the kids had great questions and, you know, a ceremony that they probably won't get to see too many times in their life. It's the first time, you know, so many years old. And it's the first time I had actually, you know, been able to participate and see that. And then lastly, last week, I was invited to South River to go to their Ag Day. And that was a great opportunity for our kids to just be outside, have opportunities for, as you know, as you were talking earlier, Jack, other, you know, learning experiences. And so Ms. Dunsmore, the school counselor there, puts that on. And, you know, and also a big shout out to the community partners who come in and give up a day at the office or whatever they're working on to come in and spend it with our, with our children. Because it's not just Rockingham County teachers presenting. It's folks from the bank. It's folks from the co-op. It's a farmer next door who brings in his tractor. And so we appreciate the community supporting our schools in such, in such a fashion. So thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our action items. The first item on our action agenda is the minutes. Members, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Does that move?
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on accepting the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda are bills and mileage. Dr. Shiflett.
Chair Lohr and members of the board, I recommend approval of the September 2023 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion?
I move to follow superintendent's recommendation to approve September bills as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the bills and mileage as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, field trips. Dr. Shiflett.
Chair Lohr and board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Broadway High School, TSA Leadership Academy, November the 17th through the 19th, 2023, eight students, Hartfield, Virginia. Turner Ashby High School, FCCLA National Conference, November the 9th through the 12th, 2023, four students, Birmingham, Alabama. And Mass Nut Technical Center, FFA Ag Production, October 20th through the 22nd, 2023, four students, Purdue University, Lafayette, Indiana, FFA Ag Production, October 27th through 1, 23rd, 31st, 2023, four students, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. And then the National FFA Convention, October 31st and November 4th, nine students, Indianapolis. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the field trips as presented by Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a, I got a question. Dr. Shiflett, when we have students going to Alabama and Ohio and Indianapolis, does the school division help out on some of that cost?
For some of the students who are competing at national events, we do try to help them. And then usually the school does numerous fundraisers to support those costs. So to try to lift the burden from the student, the parents as much as possible.
Any further questions? All those in favor of approving the field trips as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. We will now move on to information items. Dr. Shiflett, I believe you have an update on your first 100 days.
Thank you, Chair Lohr and members of the board. When I first was appointed as superintendent, I developed a plan for my first 100 days. And just as a point of reference, I did not count Saturdays as in Sundays, although as you just heard, I worked on a Saturday here a few weeks ago. But that's not really work going to a performance. So in November, around November the 22nd, to be exact, would be 100 days. But I wanted to give a quick update just about sort of kind of what I've been up to. My first 100 days were dedicated to student safety, achievement and engagement, governance and school board relations, school and community relations, and establishing our focus for the 23, 24 school year and beyond. And part of my actions, what I was planning to do and what I've been doing is listening, right? I wanted to listen and I'm still listening. Trying to build relationships, ones that are already in existence and making new, forging new relationships, to assess where we are and to plan. And I highlighted some activities and I'm just going to kind of go through quickly what some of these are. So I wanted to meet with all the school principals to talk about their particular school safety and achievement data and check the box. We did that. Spent a private hour with each principal and just had some questions and answers and talked about their schools. I met with all of the curriculum supervisors and department directors to review again, safety and achievement data in regards to their area. And we've taken care of that. Worked with an external agency to conduct a needs assessment for me to make sure that I wasn't missing something, right? Just, you know, people saying what they wanted me to hear, but I wanted to get a true, sort of an anonymous approach. Conducted a two-day retreat with our executive cabinet to build our relationships and strengthen our team. And I think we have a really great team with Dr. Alder from Mrs. Abernathy, Mr. Moyers, and Dr. Painter. And one of the things that came out of that is we met and talked and said, how can we be better, is our daily huddles. So every afternoon at 3:30, we hop on a Google Meet and we talk about things that have come up and how can we address this and make this right. That's been very beneficial. Looking at our professional development plans that support our teachers and administrators, pair of pros, and then also looking at our assessments and where are we with our assessments and what are we trying to do moving forward. As far as governance, you are very aware that we met July 12th with Dr. Wayne Harris. to talk about our working relationship, and then we had a full-day work session on the 19th. And we continue to work on our working agreement that's based on the six pillars of character, and what does that look like, and how, you know, how do we work collaboratively together to be better? And then school and community relations, meeting with elected officials, both at county and state government. Been afforded the opportunity to meet with Delegate Runyon and Delegate Will, and talk with them and speak to them about concerns from Rockingham County Public Schools, and they were very attentive and willing to listen. Met with numerous community and business leaders, and I, again, I don't want to mention them all here, but I've been trying to be involved. And when I go into these places and these groups, sometimes they ask me to present, and I said, well, I'll share a few things, but I'm here to listen. Right? I want to hear what you have to say about Rockingham County Public Schools, and where we need to go, and what the future looks like for our students. Met with a parent advisory, a teacher advisory, students in classified or yet to come, numerous nonprofit groups, such as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, just one example. Every Monday, I meet with a, the regional superintendent's meeting. Every Monday morning at 8:30, we are on a Google Meet, talking to each other about what's, what's happening. I participated in the Rockingham County Fair pretty faithfully. I was there three different nights, serving lemonade, hot dogs, and snow cones. So, that's a little bit. I visited every school in Rockingham County, I'm on my second go-around, attended RCPS athletic competitions. I've been to, I think, I got to get to a Turner Ashby varsity game, I've been to all the JV games, I've watched all the middle school volleyball games, I got to get to Broadway volleyball game. So I have a list of these things, I've been to the cross-country meet. So I have a list of things, going to the band competition, which is the next fine arts event on Saturday, did the Dinner Theater. And then communicating. So I've tried to communicate, you probably hopefully have seen the videos I've put out to parents, you know, the first five, before the first five days of school, I put out videos, and I continue to use those to, to communicate what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish. And then thinking about when we had our retreat this summer, talking to our principals about, you know, getting back to our, our calling and our purpose of public schools, and what we're trying to accomplish in Rockingham County, and addressing some of the concerns, like attendance, that came up quite frequently in my conversations, communicating our priorities with teachers, families as well. And again, part of those videos was part of that. And then the last piece, to start this process of a five-year strategic plan. And so as part of my first 100 days, I wanted to begin working on the plan with no intentions of finishing it, we just wanted to get started. And even the external audit made the same recommendation, you're right, in wanting to do this. So I explored several options with organizations and firms that are known for their work in assisting school divisions with this process. I did not seek an RFP because I wasn't planning to spend that much money, but I wanted to have someone to come in and work with us. And so I selected Cambridge Services to facilitate our work in creating a five-year strategic plan. So why Cambridge? Well, several of their consultants are familiar with us. One of them is Dr. Kastner, and so he works with Cambridge, and he is familiar with Rockingham County Public Schools, we're familiar with him. They also have some excellent references. I talked to school divisions who have used them in the past and tried to figure out what, you know, how they operated, what they did. They offer a very thorough process, which will take over seven months to complete. So although we may begin the work in November, it will be into next, you know, May, June, before it's finalized and comes to the board for a vote. And they involve numerous stakeholders, which was a very high priority for me, probably my number-one priority. A couple of firms, they weren't doing that as much, and I said, this is what it has to be. And they're, and they're very affordable as far as price goes. They were actually one of the cheapest organizations I talked with, although I didn't want to make that the number-one reason. So at the next school board meeting, Dr. Kastner will be here to talk with you folks about the process. And again, what that looks like, it's very structured, and getting folks to the table, soliciting as much feedback as we can to determine where we go for the next five years. And you can continue to follow my work on the rcps.net, my entry plan's there, I try to log and track everything that I'm doing in terms of visits and talking to organizations. So it's there for people to see. So just trying to be fully transparent as, as to what we're doing and how the first 100 days are going. So, any questions or comments regarding that?
I tell this story quite often, but during the superintendent interview process, I remember you coming in on the second time we interviewed you, and you gave us your first 100-day entry plan. I said, that's the best entry plan I've seen today. And you said, that's the best one you're going to see all day. So I appreciate what you're doing. I've had other communications with other board members from other counties that have seen your videos, and they've informed me they're going to steal you away from Rockham County, and I've told them that's not going to happen. So, but I've gotten a lot of compliments from the videos that you sent out, just being very transparent with the community. And so thank you for the hard work that you've, you know, many people may just know how bad that Dr. Shiflett wanted this job. I mean, he turned down other positions, other jobs, and I feel like I've won the lottery when we got you a superintendent. So thank you for what you're doing, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keeps cutting off. Thank you. Do you ready to roll into the redistricting proposal now?
Yes.
Now that you've had 100 days, now the hard stuff starts, right?
Give myself a little time, right? So, so redistricting proposals, I'll, I'll try to say the word proposal as many times as I can during the presentation, because it's just that, it's a proposal. And it's probably, I would say, maybe one of the more difficult things that the school board has to contemplate and do. It's, it's not something that you look forward to doing, but it's part of, I think, our due diligence, and I'm going to talk about that. So, school board policy does state that the school board determines the attendance areas for each school, and if there needs to be a change, the superintendent will make a recommendation. So, so I'm just coming tonight with a proposal, with a recommendation, and then we'll have some time to, to talk about that, and what does that look like. So the first question may be, why do we need to redistrict our students? Some may consider this a necessary evil, right? It's nothing that, you know, families like their schools, right? You heard tonight, as we're doing, you know, the character counts and the volunteers, right? You hear the volunteers are putting hours into their child's school, and so they're connected, and we value that, it's important to us. But unfortunately, we can't pick schools up and move them to where the population has grown. I mean, that would be a much easier solution for us, but it's just impossible. And so to the maximum extent possible, we want to try to use as much available space in our schools, so that we are not placing a burden on our taxpayers to build additional schools. So we're seeing, you know, some overcrowding that's beginning to creep into Cub Run, Montevideo Spotswood. And so instead of asking taxpayers to pay higher taxes to build another elementary school, let's try to use what space we have within reason, right? So we don't have to make that request until maybe five years, or 10 years, or 15 years down the road. So we want to utilize as much of our space as possible to accommodate not only what we have, but also where do we anticipate growth. Also, this is an opportunity to increase enrollment in our smaller schools that will consistently allow for more than one teacher at each grade level. Helps with balancing classes in these schools. We find ourselves in a predicament with some of our smaller schools, like Autobahn, Linville, Folks Run, where maybe there's only 25 students in a class, right? And so that's a tough decision. Do we hire another teacher, and then we have a class of 12 and 13, which is probably too small? Or do we keep a class of 25, which is probably too large, right? So can we increase the enrollments and get them to a place where maybe it can be a little bit more consistent with their enrollment, and it's not fluctuating? We don't have teachers moving from grade level to grade level. And it also gives principals an opportunity to sometimes shuffle students around, and sometimes you may find, you know, two young men who really enjoy each other's company, and when they're together, they can have a good time. And sometimes it's nice to be able to put them with different teachers. And so that would give us a little flexibility. Some things we considered, as we talked about this redistricting, as much as possible, not, we tried not to move students from their high school attendance area, okay? As much as possible. However, this plan, this proposal does include some students, but not all, changing high schools. And I'm going to talk about the details as we go through the presentation. I relied heavily on our transportation department for guidance, because we want to make sure the proposed bus routes are efficient and effective. We really didn't want two buses going down the same highway, picking up school, students, taking them to different schools, and as far as attendance area, not elementary versus secondary, but, you know, buses picking up for, you know, Riverbend and Elkton Elementary School. How can we make sure we're very, very thoughtful about that? Try to make sure we're not significantly, significantly changing the amount of travel time for students. In many cases, travel time has been decreased. And then we also reviewed current and upcoming developments within our county and including our towns. So trying to get a pulse on what we can expect to come in the, in the development. The timeline, you've seen this before, Dr. Schike in May presented to the school board just sort of a preliminary proposal. And we had shared that we would come back here tonight to do an update based on current enrollment data. And the public will have opportunity to provide comments regarding the proposed plan at October 23rd meeting at the County Administration Building, the 13th at Spotswood High School, and the 22nd at the County Administration Building, with the proposed plan to vote November 27th. Again, that may change based on what else the school board would like us to examine and to think about. Along with this idea of timeline, I think considering the potential growth and development within the Rockingham County, we may need to revisit this a little more frequently. I think the last time we talked about redistricting may have been 2019, when we redistricted some students from the Grotto South River School to Elkton Middle School, East Rockingham High School. And so we just may have to keep a pulse on this, and watch numbers, watch enrollment. In the May proposal, there was a suggestion that we shift some students from Peak View to Cub Run. However, the current recommendation that I'm offering does not include this. However, right, we may need to see how quickly growth in UDA occurs. We may have to come back next year or another year. But one of the things, as we were looking at this, and I want to thank Justin Moyers, because he spent a lot of time helping me with this, looking at numbers, and Chris Sowers with transportation, as we were looking at numbers and looking at growth, we were afraid if we moved kids out of Cub Run, then moved a large portion into Cub Run, we really would probably put them back at where they are now. I mean, not quite. And their current attendance area is in an area where there's the most projected growth, right? So we wanted to be thoughtful about that. And again, these are, these are predictions, if you will. So just want to give you a sense of kind of why we, why we're doing this, and kind of how our, what our approach was. So our current enrollment and capacity numbers, I'm just going to run through these quickly. Broadway High School, you see there's an asterisk there, that would include when the addition is complete. So right now, they don't, they cannot hold nearly 1,300 students, but after the addition, they would be able to, their enrollment's 911. They have capacity of 382 students. East Rockingham, 444. Spotswood, 77. Turner Ashby, 242. So if you see that bottom right-hand corner, we have capacity in our high schools for 1,100 students. So we have some room for growth. At the middle schools, Elkton Middle School is the tightest one we have, they only have two open seats. But I, again, Justin and I looked at some projections, and if we take all of our current elementary schools and we move them forward, in three or four years from now, they're actually going to have 40 or 50 empty seats, provided there's not significant growth in those areas. And we know they're building houses in Grottos and McGaughy'sville, so we'll have to watch that. And we have some plans, maybe with the capital improvement plan, to address some of that. J. Frank has almost 300 seats, Montevideo 99, and Wilbur Pence over 300. So again, you see at the middle school, we have some, some, some availability. And when we talk about capacity, we're meaning how many students we can fit into the building comfortably, not staffing, right? We're just making an assumption that we would hire the teachers and staff to make it happen. Elementary schools, Cub Run, a capacity of 800, and it's at 765, not much capacity there. But here's something I want to just caution this board about. Although you can maybe put 800 students in that building, that cafeteria is the same size as the cafeteria at Peak View and Mountain View and Riverbend that has 600 students. It's hard to feed all of those kids at one setting, within a reasonable timeframe for lunch. So we have to be mindful of that. Elkton Elementary School has 331, Folks Run 153, John C. 95, John Whalen 148, Lacy Spring 166, Linville-Eadham 39, McGaughy'sville 160, Mountain View 137, Autobahn 121, Peak View's 50. So there's a school, as I mentioned earlier, we have to keep an eye on, and just, you know, they still have some room, but when will they hit that max capacity? Plains 139, Pleasant Valley 129, and then Riverbend 238, and South River 111. So elementary total's 925. So again, all of those seats, so to speak, are not maybe sometimes where we need them to be based on the population. So it can be a little bit deceptive. You can't just maybe assume, well, we got plenty of room over here, well, it's not where we need the room. So we have to keep that in mind. So the proposed recommendation, we would move 169 students from Cub Run to Lacy Spring. We would move 70 students from Montevideo to J. Frank Hilliard, and 108 students from Broadway, I mean, excuse me, from Spotswood to Broadway. Then, and that, and that's the area that does involve high school. That's a high school shift as well. The other shifts are all elementary-only, meaning those students would go to a different elementary school, but they would still attend the middle school and high school that they're currently in, so that would not be a change. So from Lacy Spring to Linville-Eadham, there'd be 27 students. From Lacy Spring to Plains, there would be 30 students. From Plains to Folks Run, 31. From John C. Myers to Folks Run, 37. And from Mountain View to Autobahn, 81. And from John Whalen to Autobahn, 28. Again, this is a recommendation, but if the board says, hey, we like this, or we want to move with this, here's what capacity would look like. At Broadway, you would still have room for 274 more students, even if you put those 100 and, I think, what was it, 108 in here? Spotswood would then increase to 185, J. Frank would still remain at 225, Montevideo would increase to 169, Cub would have 204, they'd be right about 600, still our largest elementary school. Folks Run would still have capacity for 85 students, just not sure where we would find, how we would draw lines to, to capture those seats, it'd be really hard. John C. Myers would have 132, Whalen would have 176, Lacy Spring 54, Lees would become pretty tight with nine, but right now, there's not a lot of development in that part of the community. Mountain View, 218, Plains, 140. So that's what it would ultimately look like. And so I'm going to kind of walk through what the scenarios are in each situation. So if you can see the boundary in that picture, that's where, that's where we are redistricting, that group, those families, those students. It's north of Harrisonburg, North 11, that's the 169 from Cub Run to Lacy. Talk about closer bus rides, that'll be significantly shorter for those, those students. The 70 from Montevideo, and the students from Spotswood. These are the roads that are impacted. I'm not going to read all of those to you, but those are the roads, this is all in the presentation, it's there for the public to see. These are the roads that were, the lines have been redrawn, and that will have a, would have a change in, in placement. So that's scenario one. Scenario two, because we're taking students into Lacy Spring, we're going to take some students out of Lacy Spring. And so this is out a little bit on beyond Crocker Road, and these highways, these roads here would be impacted. So these are students going from Lacy Spring to Linville-Eadham, to make sure we have sufficient room. And then scenario three, some more students leaving Lacy Spring, going to Plains. This is out, these highways out towards 10th Legion Road, out that way, closer to Out that way, closer to, so the footers removed from Lacy Spring, getting into the Plains Elementary School. Scenario four, some students going from Plains to Folks Run. Uh, we have had some conversations with the, uh, management at, um, in Timerville about looking at some expansion and growth. So we want to be thoughtful about making sure they have room for growth. Uh, so taking some students out, um, from North Mountain Road, um, and taking some of those students towards Folks Run. And then scenario five, taking some students from John C. Myers to Folks Run, uh, thinking about, um, like down Turley Town Road, and some of those students, instead of coming into John C. Myers, would go towards, uh, Folks Run. And again, these students would all still attend J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, they would all attend Broadway High School. And then, um, scenario six, taking some students from Mountain View to Audubon Elementary School, uh, out sort of 33 West that way, taking some of those students out from Cloverhill, uh, into, into Audubon. And then scenario seven is pulling some students from John Whalen to Audubon, uh, out through, uh, some of those roads, like Silver Creek Road, out through, uh, Dry Hollow Road, and pulling some of those students. So there is the recommendation, as far as what particular parts would be changed, redistricted. So our next steps is we plan to send a letter home to all families who, uh, would be impacted by the proposal, right? Send them a letter just to say, this week, we are considering redistricting. If the proposed plan would be accepted, your home is in that neighborhood, right? So that way, people aren't trying to guess, do I live on that part of the road, or am I over here, or this side, that side? They would know specifically, yes, I'm impacted, no, I'm not. Uh, so we'll, we'll be, um, sharing that with them. And then obviously, we have opportunities for, uh, you know, the public to give comment. Uh, I obviously welcome suggestions, if there's another way to look at this, or to view it, or to, you know, see what else we can do. Uh, but trying to think about, again, alleviating some pressure there that we're seeing in that growth development area, uh, outside of Harrisonburg. And then making room for growth, right? We see Ryan Holmes Building in, in, in Cobblers Valley. We see outside of Ocelot Springs, they have a home. So we've got to be thoughtful about, as these students come, how can we rearrange things to accommodate that as much as possible? And again, we're not going to fill up every seat at Folks Run or Audubon, it's, it's not going to happen. But how do we use as much of our space as possible? Be creative. Uh, and again, without traveling students, you know, long distances, let's be reasonable. And, and what does that look like? Uh, so that we can be good stewards of our taxpayers' money, uh, and make good decisions. And it, and I, it's hard, right? Because that burden falls on us, and it's tough, right, to have to do that. Uh, what questions do you have for me, just about the plan, or what we're wanting to do?
Are you going to make this PDF or the presentation available on the agenda?
Yes. Yes. This presentation will be on the agenda for the public to see, and then we'll put it up on our website, so folks can see it there as well, so they don't have to find it or look for it as much. And then again, the families who it impacts, they should be looking for a letter from us this week, right? We'll send it to the, you know, with the student. It'll come home in the backpack express, I guess. Maybe we'll try to email some. But we want to make sure we're clear, because there's some schools where they, we didn't mention, right? We didn't mention some, some schools. So you're at Turner Ashby, we didn't mention Turner Ashby, so you don't have to worry. But the schools that we mentioned tonight, if you're there, and, and you're going to be impacted, we'll send you that letter. Because we want to make sure people are clear about what we're proposing.
And we will be talking about this for the next, uh, three school board meetings, right?
That's right.
And voting on it the second board meeting in November, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we have three more board meetings before the, and again, it depends on what information you receive, what else you want me to explore, right? I mean,
Right.
We don't want to rush. At the same time, you know, if we think about, what is used, if we go with this proposal, taking out 169 from Cub Run to Lacy, right? That may be an impact on personnel. And so we need to be thoughtful about, what does that look like? And we want to do that sooner rather than later, because we get into February, we're starting to talk about, we're really deep into budget, and do we end up finding that we need a, a teacher or two to, to make all this work out? Uh, because it, trust me, I think you take these 11,000 students, so to speak, and kind of shake them up, move them around, the numbers will just not work out perfectly, right? There'll, there'll be some outliers where we'll have to make some adjustments. So, yeah. But we'll, we'll try to work through the process and see, see what feedback we receive. Yep.
I really appreciate you thinking about Cub Run as well, because they are, I'm, uh, pretty overcrowded out there. When you go into Cub Run, you look and just see how big that school is, and how many students are there. So to take that many students out and then to give them another 100 back, it just wouldn't, uh, they wouldn't feel the difference, I don't think. Uh, so thanks for seeing that.
Yeah.
And that means a lot, I know, to the, to the principal, to the schools, uh, to our teachers. Uh, there's a, you go to Cub Run, it's a big school, really big school.
Yeah. Now, it, it is, and again, as, as I looked at the numbers, and again, thanks to Justin for all his help, putting these projections together and working with, with me on this and explaining it to me numerous times. And then we, I said, oh my goodness, well, we take these kids out and put more in, we're, man, they're not really even going to think we had a, a redistricting proposal, right? It's going to feel the same. And then we looked at growth, and they're projected right now to have the most growth, right, for, you know, as far as development and building. So it didn't, it just didn't seem like the right thing to do at the time. But again, looking at some of the developments, we're going to have to just be on our toes and, and do the best we can. Um, the one thing I'm confident of is that, uh, pick one of the 15 elementary schools, and your kids are going to get a good education, right? Um, we have great principals and leaders and teachers. And so I, I feel confident, I, that we're sending someone to a bad place. Not, there's just no way. Um, and I think people know that as well, it's just the connections that they already have with their current schools, and I respect that, right? Um, I under, I understand that.
Uh, just seeing this tonight for the, in this presentation, um, are the scenarios all independent, or are they dependent on how much, you know, we go with one, we're now affecting seven, or we?
Some of these would be, uh, dependent, right? So if we, let's say we decided we're not going to take any students out of Lacy Spring, or we're going to take all 169 from Cub Run, we have a problem.
Yeah.
Right? So it's a little bit of shifting and adjustment. Uh, and again, there's some, there's some intentionality here to, to get some more students in Folks Run and Audubon, right? I mean, that's, and Linville Edom, right? And, and I've talked to those three principals, and they've said, we need more students, right? Because of some of those scenarios I described earlier, right? You got one third grade teacher, and will there, will there be enough students next year to justify two fourth grade teachers? Maybe not. And then there's a lot of, and, you know, a lot of, you know, fluctuations. And so they would value to have more students, so.
Just to be transparent to the public, I thank you, Dr. Schiflett, and your team that we met with, uh, Ms. Lore and myself, and, uh, two board supervisors, Stephen King, and the planning commission over at the County Admin Building last week. And, um, y'all are, we're, we are concerned with growth in our community and where those numbers are going to put us here in the future. So thank y'all for, it was good to be at the table with County Admin, with the Plan Commission, with RCPS, and just really communicating and looking at the numbers that we could have in the next few years.
Yeah.
Because we could be right back up in there at Cub Run where we're at right now.
Yep.
So, thank y'all for your hard work.
And I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Justin here publicly now, at one of the upcoming meetings, if he would share a little bit of that presentation for all the board members in the community to see.
Thank you.
I thought Dylan Nicely did a tremendous job explaining that to us the other day. And, um, it's, it's not necessarily a perfect system, but it's, it gives us some idea. And, um, I, maybe Justin can share that and just what we're trying to do. So as developments being proposed or coming about, we have some way of trying to at least make a guess, an estimate, an educated guess of what it may, how it may impact the schools. And, uh, yeah, that was a great meeting, and, you know, uh, we're on the same team, right, with the board of supervisors. We're, you know, working together, and so it's important for us to sit at the table and, and talk through these things. So, yeah, that was a wonderful opportunity. I think, uh, you know, Mr. King reached out to us, Mr. Armstrong, and said, let's meet and talk. And I said, absolutely. It's great. So, yep, thank you. Anything else? Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
And we do encourage everyone to, uh, to watch those backpacks for sure, and, um, look for that, that correspondence, and also get involved. Let us know your thoughts on all of that. Especially if there, if you see something we don't, we definitely would need to hear that. Next on the agenda is Dr. Oliver with some policy revisions for us.
Chair Lord, members of the board, Dr. Schiflett. I'm pinch hitting for Becky Tinnell tonight. She wasn't able to be here. Um, there's just one, uh, policy for your information this evening. Uh, it is policy GCDC, Teaching Experience allowable credit. Uh, and there's just one adjustment in there. There had been a provision in the policy about how we accounted for, um, experience of teachers who had been at, who came to MTC with, um, more or over 20 years of experience, and how we were, uh, providing credit for them. Uh, we are making a, proposing an, an adjustment to essentially treat their experience like, uh, any other employee, any teacher. So, um, that is, it's just one, couple of words that are struck through, basically changing that provision. So, um, again, you can review that. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Becky Tinnell or myself, um, and then you'll be back for action at the next meeting.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Thank you, Dr. Oliver. Dr. Schiflett?
So at our last board meeting, um, the board had authorized me to develop proposed policy revisions that incorporate reference to the sections of the model policies, as well as any other suggested policy revisions, to the current and applicable existing Rockingham County School Board policies. Uh, and then with the idea that the board would undertake, uh, continuing review and consideration of model policies D, G, and H. So, uh, my, um, work was to reference policy A, B, C, E, and F. And so I have for you tonight for information, um, a number of policies, and I'm just going to highlight just a little bit if I, if I may. Policies AC, AD, IJ are consistent with, or more commensurate with, or I should say, more, more comprehensive than, uh, the model policies in regards to Section A, Section A of the model policy, okay? And then I got a stack of papers here, so, it's all right. And then, um, GFHAGBA, JFC, JFCIA, GCL, and GBAJHA relate to Section B. Okay? Then, I just want to let you know how these are, they're referenced, they're all referenced, you'll see at the bottom. I want, but I want to let you know where they, how they corresponded. And then, uh, JOA, uh, and JO correspond with CE. Now, I did not, uh, address F, not because I was being negligent, but there was some expression that maybe we should review our dress code. It is gender, gender neutral, right? So there wasn't a problem with that in the model policies, it's gender neutral, but just maybe we should just address the dress code, right? Maybe in general. So these are for your information. Uh, and then we still need to, um, process and work through, uh, D, which is identification of students, uh, G, uh, sex-specific activities and facilities, and H, athletics. So, for your information.
Thank you. Um, so, in regards to that, board members, if you guys can please send me dates that work with you all, so that we can get together and discuss, uh, policies for G, D, G, and H, uh, at your earliest convenience, I would appreciate it. Are there any other questions?
Just to be clear, we're two weeks from the last time we discussed this. And the model policy came out July 18th of this year, and we're still looking for dates to meet, to go over DG and H, which is really the meat of the policy that you guys rejected at the last school board meeting. So when do you think, Ms. Chair, will we be going, um, to be taken care of DG and H to make sure that we're in compliance with that in the model policy? When do you project that?
Um, I've asked repeatedly for you to send me dates for things, and, uh, haven't gotten dates from you. So as soon as you can send me some dates, I'm happy to put up, to, to schedule a meeting for us all to meet.
To be clear to the public, that comment, have you ever made, uh, sent me a date for this, for DG and H? Have you ever asked me for a date until tonight?
I've asked you to provide me with dates repeatedly, yes.
For DG and H, for what you just accused me of tonight?
Yes.
You, you did?
Yes.
Okay. Please share that with me, so I can share that as well with the public, because that is a lie.
Thank you for your input. If you can please get me dates, I would appreciate it. Board members, any further, any further, um, comments? Next on the agenda is the financial, oh, I, yes, actually, financial review. You guys have that in your packets. Um, so please review that at your convenience. We're moving on to other business. Board member questions and comments? Mr. Cross, we're going to start with you.
I, yeah, I, I really do want to say tonight, this is the fact that, um, Jesus said, to be angry but sin not, right? And so when, when there's disagreement, there should be disagreement in decisions that are ma, being made for over 11,000 children. You know, if all we're doing is rubber stamping what the superintendent wants to do, then this board is not, um, not needed. And so tonight, I'm, as we, as we, again, as you said tonight, that, that you've sent me information to ask for dates when we can meet on DG and H, that's not true. And so you make me look like a liar before the public, and that's not true at all. And so I'd like for you to produce to the public tonight, when you sent me those dates for us to meet on policies D, G, and H, because that is simply not true, Ms. Lore. I'm, at the very beginning of the school year this year, I'm, I sat down because I have an eight-year-old daughter that I care the world about. And I sat there because of our church school, only had a few kids going back, um, there this coming year, and I, I thought very hard whether I was going to send my daughter back to public school. And I really had a, a hard issue with just contemplating whether I was going to send my daughter back. And to see what happened in our public schools on Wednesday, two days after that, that you guys rejected the model policy, this is not politics for me. I, I was angry. I was very angry that we could have stopped a male from going into a girl's locker room, and from these girls having to be traumatized, that they don't have a private place to change when they're at school or at a school event. So this isn't politics with me. If you think it is, then you got another thing coming. It's not politics. And the problem is, is that we live in a generation where, where we live in a cancel culture, where people are afraid to say anything, and I get that. Because if they say anything, now you're a homophobe, now you're trans, you hate trans kids. But you know what? I'll be that person that people can hate. Because I'll be their voice to make sure they're not being violated of their civil, of their rights to be at a private place to change in. And I was upset when I spoke with parents who were afraid to send their kids back the following, two days later, to a meet, because their children were anxious that there was going to be a boy in the locker room. So this isn't politics for me. We need to address DG and H, get this taken care of, stop playing politics. this taken care of, stop playing politics, and address these issues that are very serious, and they are touching our children in Rockingham County. So, that's my comments for tonight. You may think I'm a, I'm a big bully or a big ogre. I really don't care what you think of me. But it's these kids that I care about. And that's why I came on this board, is because I care about them and I love them. And I will be their voice. When everyone else will be, is being criticized and not wanting to say anything, I will speak up for them. So, all I'm asking you guys to do is to vote on DG and H, get something into place. I know you don't want to adopt it. We need to get something into place to protect our kids going forward. And also, that our staff knows how to deal with these situations when, when something happens. That's the big deal here, is that they know where we stand, because we're the board. We make the policies here for the Rockingham County Public Schools. And so, our employees need to know, hey, what do we do when this happens? Because sure enough, they don't want to violate, violate no one's rights. And so, they need to have some policy to stand on, and they need the board to act and to move. We've had plenty enough time to act on this. And we are dragging our feet to address these issues. So, I'm asking the board very kindly tonight, I know I got very passionate, but I'm asking the board very kindly tonight, let's address DG and H. We should have already done that. It's been two weeks since we've not, we've, we've rejected it, where there's been no talk, no emails from, from any of, from the board sent out to me of communicating on when we can meet, except tonight. But yet, I was accused of not sending you dates back when we can meet on DG and H. So, I would like also a, a public apology when, when you feel it's necessary to say, Mr. Cross, I'm sorry that I lied, because that's not part of our pillars of character. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Yeah.
Dr. McQuilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Cross, on August 29th at 7:24 PM, I sent you an email asking you to, please send me some dates that you're available to meet. After I receive your dates, I will work on a time with the full board to meet and agree on these goals, to work on these goals. You replied back, and I'm not going to read it, because it's not very nice. And then, I replied back on August 30th at 2:39 PM. In order to ensure the success of creating meaningful policy for Rockingham County Public Schools, I believe we need to have a work session to discuss the pillars of character for effective board communication before we can work on integrating the model policies into our policy manual. Can you please provide me with dates you are available for a work session to include a legal update regarding, regarding the model policies? On August 30th at 3:18 PM, you replied back, I am not attending your work session. I will attend the legal session. Please let me know what time it will begin. And I let you know what time we had that legal session. I've repeatedly asked you for dates, so I'm sorry.
For DG and H?
Are DG and H not part of the model policies?
Ms. Gilkis, when was, when was our last board meeting?
We're not getting into a back and forth on this. Is...
September 20th, so September 25th was our board meeting, when, when Mr. Folk had our attorney draft up a motion, which you, also you and Ms. McQuilkin was a part of, to accept the five out of the eight, but reject DG and H. And so, there's been, again, there's been no communication from you, as you said, that you have communicated to me, and I haven't responded back to you concerning DG and H. And I'm, I'm, I do not appreciate you telling the public tonight that I have not responded back to you on that, on those policies, because that is not true.
Dr. Shiflett, do you have any further, any questions?
I'm good.
Board members, we have reason to enter a closed session. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1. Personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically relating to requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you all. Oh, wait, I have just a little bit of discussion. Do we have any students in the house? Yay. Thank you, guys, for coming. I hope you found it enjoyable. I hope you learned something tonight. Everyone, please have a safe trip home, and we look forward to seeing you guys in the future meeting. We are now in closed session. Thank you.